Right, good evening everybody.
Evening madam mayor.
Nice to see you all.
Evening Matt.
And you too.
Okay, and have we anybody, members of the public that are wishing to speak tonight before our meeting?
No, we don't.
No, we don't, okay. So we can move on to item one. Any apologies for absence?
No apologies for absence.
No apologies for absence. Item two, any declarations of interest?
We've got Councilor Gately, Neil Mordu.
Mine is on 8.1, Swan Community Health.
Okay.
Mine's 8.2, The Holiday Club. And 8.5.11, the Fair Trade Association in inverted commas. If it's the Fair Trade Town Steering Group, I'm involved with that. And that Fair Trade Association is something else, I'm not aware of.
That's what you think it is.
And mine is 8.2, The Holiday Club as a member of the PCC at Buckingham Church and the Member of Churches Together.
Okay.
We've got Lisa and Councilor Hirons.
Okay, 8.2 as well.
And Lisa?
Thank you Matt. I can't sit on there, but I am an employee of the Buckingham New Centre, Buckingham New Clubs. And you do give them funding through the four or three yearly grants. So if that can be noted, please.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No one else, is there? No. So move on to item three, the minutes to receive and agree the minutes of the full council meeting held on Monday, the 13th of July.
Ruth.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything arising from that? No? Item four are the interim minutes to receive and agree the minutes of the interim council on the 14th of September.
As the Cole has a hand.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got two or three items on those minutes that need correcting. First of all, the first page, interim full council doesn't have the date on. Just says held Monday, September 2020. Needs the 14th put on there. It might be behind the banner across interim full council. Secondly, page two of the minutes. The item towards the top, the three bullet points. You've repeated, the mayor confirmed that she'd provide a written response to the questions raised. That's been repeated twice. It shouldn't be on after the third bullet point. It should be where it is below.
Yeah.
Right. Then to move on, page three. This is the debate about the working, sorry, not the working group, page four I should be saying. This, yeah, page three, sorry, page three onwards. This is councillor Stutchbury's motion. I have let Nina know about this, but there was some confusion in the minutes, which I double checked on the YouTube. And what it should actually say on the top of page four. After Robyn's statement is, an amendment was proposed by councillor Cole and seconded by councillor Stutchbury. To remove the words wishes to from the first line of the motion. The reason I've raised this is because there was quite a lot of confusion over that motion. But the councillor Trye had just said at the beginning of the debate that he preferred to see voicing in the second paragraph replaced with something stronger. But that was never seconded, so it was never enacted. I then proposed that we made it stronger by, instead of saying BTC wishes to express its deep alarm and concern. That BTC expresses its deep alarm and concern to make it more forceful. Councillor Stutchbury accepted that amendment. Therefore, that becomes the second. Also, the statement afterwards, councillor Cole, vice chairman of planning committee, read the following statement. That was my own statement, it wasn't on behalf of the planning committee. If that could be made clear. Nina, I did send this to Nina, I hope you got that, Nina, today. Yeah, she did, good. Then down the bottom of the page, penultimate paragraph, now the white paper suggests with an S. And finally, over the page, page five. One, two, three, four paragraphs down, there are many things I could pick up on, but I will close with the contentious issue of what a beautiful building is. So that is, needs to be replaced with a A. Thank you, that's everything, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, is that everything on there? Anybody else? No. Okay, we can move on to item five, the planning committee to receive the minutes of the planning committee.
Yeah, I'd like to present the minutes of Monday, 20th of July, the 17th of August and 14th of September.
Okay, thank you Lisa.
Thank you.
And item six, the town centre and events committee to receive the minutes for those meetings held on 27th of July and 10th of September.
I'd like to present those minutes to be noted and will be agreed at the next committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, Robyn. Item seven is the environment committee to receive those minutes on the 7th of September.
I present those minutes to be received and they will be agreed at the next environment committee meeting. There are no recommendations.
Okay, thanks Ruth.
Thank you.
And item eight, the resources committee.
Yeah, I'm happy to, for you to receive the draft minutes of the resources committee. And hopefully they'll be resolved at our next meeting as well. You'll notice that there's a shed load of recommendations under there. I'm not sure how you want to carry this forward, madam chair. Do you want to take them forward or what shall I?
We have got some on the agenda, haven't we?
I think it's normally the committee chair that does it, to be honest.
Maybe some debate about them, okay. The first one, at 8.1 on the agenda, that's one recommendation. Can we assume he's happy with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
8.2 on the agenda, this is the Buckingham Churches Together one.
Councillor Harvey has a hand.
Councillor Harvey then.
Well, I think as everybody knows by now, because I circulated a report. That was sadly too late to go on this agenda, which is what I wrote it for. But I appreciate that the town clerk and his staff are busy people and I just didn't get it in on time. Getting things in on time, of course, is very important because we aim to be a very efficient council in everything that we do. And whilst there are always excuses that we can make about getting things on time, I obviously accept it wasn't possible to get that report into this agenda. But I have circulated it to everybody and my main point I'm making is that it's very clear from the analysis that I've done of, well, detailed analysis of one of the videos produced. And also a cursory look at some of the other five that were produced as well. Is that they are intended to effectively be a Sunday School session. I would contend they are not just educating about Christianity, they are persuading people of Christianity in a way that I would say is evangelistic and proselytising. Now, we as a council typically do not support activities that are promoting either a religion or a political viewpoint, because we take the view that we should be neutral in our grant making. If the council decides that it should award £300 to the Churches Together sort of a group as per the recommendation from the resources committee. Then that, for my mind, will be setting a precedent that this council will in the future be empowered to offer grants to other organisations, be they of other religions or indeed of a political persuasion. And if that's the way it is, that's the way a precedent will be set. But I fundamentally disagree that we should be going down that route. And I think there are plenty of examples and I can cite them one after the other, but there's no real point because you've all had the report beforehand. But evidently, the videos that were produced were designed to either consolidate or promote Christianity to those children that were involved and the adults, of course, that were involved in the holiday club. I'm sure everyone was welcome, but of course, it is in the nature of evangelist to welcome people who are not particularly persuaded of a religious viewpoint. Because they want them to be persuaded. And obviously, the videos were created in order to persuade. So that's my perspective and I will disagree at the time and disagree still with us funding the money. And I think we should go along with what the town clerk originally said, which was that we shouldn't, we should not be funding this this amount of money to the Churches Together Children's Club, because clearly it is promoting one religion.
Well, that's a long way of putting it, councillor Harvey. Are you recommending that the recommendation not be accepted and be referred back to the resources committee? For review along the lines you've discussed?
No, I'm taking the view now that as a full council, we should decide that we follow through with the town clerk's recommendation and do not give the money to the Churches Together, because the videos were of a religious nature, a promotion of a religious nature that we have in the past not supported. But if the council wants to make a precedent, then that's the council's view, but of course, I will be voting against that.
Who else wanted to talk, Paul?
I've seen hands from councillor Mordu, councillor Stutchbury, councillor P Collins, councillor G Collins and councillor Gately.
Okay, let's take them in that order then, councillor Mordu.
I did watch the video and you're talking about something which is children of primary school age will watch. And I wouldn't say there's anything evangelical in it. It's because of the lockdown situation, it was all about making things. And the only problem I had was where it said, blow through a straw into some bubbles. Which, and then take a copy of that onto a piece of paper, but don't tell your parents, they may not like it. Really, I don't think any child or any parent is going to be turned and become radicalised by either the video or the content. It's done as a holiday club and you don't have to take your children there. It's up to the parents whether they wish to or not. And it's quite clear on the, that it's run by the Churches Together as a holiday club. Now, Churches Together would give you a hint that it may be something in it about Christian religion, which I don't see a problem. It's not an indoctrination system, it's purely to keep children occupied during the summer holidays. And the children that go tend to be more from the disadvantaged families. And it enables them to do something during the school holidays, even if it's watching from home at the moment. So I think the sum of £300 to help them is small for the benefit it creates for those children.
Thank you, councillor Stutchbury.
Yeah. On the evening when we debated this in resources, my amendment wasn't taken forward, it was to discuss it again and look at the criteria. So I didn't vote against it then on that basis. And one of the things which concerns me with this is not giving the £300. It's the way that we've got to where we are. So I think the thing that we should do, if the council agrees this tonight, is to agree that this does not set a precedent against our policies. I think that cat is for what John said. Because if we are, and I take it on advisement from the town clerk, acting adverse to our policies, and I've only got, I didn't watch the videos. I've been quite busy actually to watch those videos. And I was hoping to review it again, but that wasn't the decision, what happened with the committee. But I do think we need to take advisement on the town clerk if he believes it has breached our policy, being as his previous recommendation was thus and we went against it. But to disagree with the recommendations of the majority of that committee, I don't think it's where we should be at this meeting. But we need to be assured that what we are doing isn't changing a precedent. And if it is changing a precedent, we have to go back and amend it to be correct. That's where I would think, because otherwise we have a danger of looking ridiculous.
Thank you, Paddy. Is that me you're calling?
Yes.
Me, okay. Well, we've been giving money to Churches Together for this holiday club for over a decade now. So that's the precedent, we've always given money to them. It does provide a lot of entertainment to the kids and the parents' relief. I think it'd only be a very narrow-minded swirl sport, they want to squash it for that narrow-minded interpretation of life.
Thank you, Geraldine.
I just wanted to know, I know Paul put an advice note out, whether he wanted to speak about that, town clerk.
I was going to finish with Paul.
Okay.
There was somebody else wanting to speak.
Councillor Gately and then councillor Strain Clark has a hand.
Right, thank you, Margaret.
Hi, thank you. I'm in a position I'm often in, where I can see both sides of this. I've already expressed or indicated an interest in this, having been a supporter of Holiday Club for many years, a member of Wells Street Church, a committed Christian, and I've been a helper at Holiday Club. I've sent my grandchildren there. So I'm a firm supporter of the Holiday Club. But I can see the counterargument, because although it is open to children of all faiths and none. I don't think the Holiday Club would want to be hamstrung by the idea that they couldn't promote Christianity in any way, because they were receiving a grant from an organisation that should be neutral. I also noticed when we had the minutes of the community board, I think it was, there's reference in there to not supporting religious groups. I'm not quoting that directly. And I wondered whether a similar principle should apply to the town council. So I think basically what I'm saying is, although I'm a full supporter of the Holiday Club and that it should continue. I'm not completely persuaded that funding should be coming from the town council. I'll probably abstain.
Thank you, Margaret, Christine.
Thank you, that was interesting hearing what Margaret says. Yes, I really wanted to back up what John said. I really don't think as the town council that we should be supporting this. And however much we think, yes, that good work is being done and that parents, yes, it's up to parents whether to take them or not. But you know, is it up to all the people who are paying their rates, you know, to pay for a religious something? You know, I'm sure all the churches together could manage without, you know, this small amount of money and carry on, okay. And you know, without making us have to jump one way or another. And I'm not trying to be narrow-minded or anything, I'm just thinking about, you know, the whole you know, what we expect of our town council to do, to be not religious and not to be political either. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, was there anybody else?
Yes, please.
Councillor O'Donoghue and councillor P Collins.
Well, Geraldine's spoken, Lisa?
I haven't spoken on my own behalf.
All right, Lisa?
Okay. I agreed with John's arguments at resources and I didn't vote in favour of giving the money. Because I was in favour of Robyn's amendment that we take another look at it. But I'm grateful that John has had the time to do a full report, because it was very informative. And I do appreciate it, because I definitely wouldn't have had time to have done all of that. So knowing what the material is, and especially after hearing Margaret speak. I have to continue with thinking that we don't give money to religion, to religious organisations. So yeah, I'll be voting against it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Geraldine?
I just, I'm appalled that we have this item on here. We support all children in our town. We are not supporting just a religious group. So I think we are discriminating against a religious group if we do not grant the holiday club. And if we don't grant them, then I think we should not grant any children's groups whatsoever. So we do not discriminate against any children. It's open to all children, it's not a religious group at all. And I just think it's discriminatory and I vote for this.
Okay, Paul, do you want to have a final word on it?
Yeah. I think the principle is really clear that the town council shouldn't fund the promotion of a particular religion. So we shouldn't fund the promotion of Christianity. We absolutely can fund faith-based organisations to carry out projects or activities with a wider social purpose. And in this case, the question is, is this funding going towards specifically promoting Christianity? Or are we funding wider social benefit? And I think from the comments in the advice note I've given, there's a judgement to be made there, and it's for councillors to make that judgement.
Thanks, Paul. Geraldine?
Point of order?
Sorry, who?
A point of order, if I may.
Oh, go on then.
I'd like to ask the town clerk, one is whether this is about, if we vote for this, whether this is about our policy or the law. You know, what are we being bound here by in terms of the point you just made about not promoting a religion? Is that a point of law or is that a point of our existing policy? And secondly, could I ask for his view about whether if somebody puts down Buckingham Parish Church under item 10 on their register of interests, directed to a charitable purpose, which you're a member or position of a general control or management. If that person has put down Buckingham Parish Church, then I would say that councillor P Collins has forgotten to declare that he has an interest in this topic and therefore should not be voting.
I need to clarify that, I have no interest, I have no position in the church whatsoever anymore. I used to be churchwarden, I haven't been for 18 months. So ignore me, count me out of this. I'm entitled to it with any other councillor.
They need to change your register of interest then, councillor Collins.
Maybe that's out of date, but that doesn't mean I have to declare an interest now, because I haven't got one now. All right?
Can we please move to the vote?
Chairman, do you want to take a vote on this now, whether we support the funding?
Sorry, the town clerk hasn't answered my question yet. Is this a point of law or is this a point of policy?
You raised a point of order, it was actually a point of information. Paul, do you want to respond to that?
Well, the Equality Act is clearly law, which would mean we can't discriminate against people on the backgrounds of faith. And we have to promote cohesion between and understanding between faiths. We can't, I can't think of a point of law which would say we couldn't specifically fund this, to be honest. But as I say, the issue around, should we be promoting? I think we're agreed that we shouldn't use council funding to specifically proselytise. But this is, some councillors clearly take the view this is a project with social benefit and therefore, for the amount of money requested, it would be reasonable in that context.
Right, I go back to my request to the mayor, whether she wants to now call a vote on this. Whether we support the payment of £300 or not.
Okay, call a vote?
Recorded vote, please. Okay.
So what are you calling for, those in favour or those against?
Those in favour.
Of what?
Paying £300.
Paying £300 to the Holiday Club.
Please stop councillors calling out, please. The vote is to be taken.
So we are voting on whoever is for agreeing the £300 to the Buckingham Churches Holiday Club. All those in favour?
In favour, we have councillor G Collins, Bloomfield, Trye, Mahi, Mordu and P Collins. That's six.
Okay, and those against?
Against, we have councillor Smith, Strain Clark, Cole, Ralph, O'Donoghue and Harvey. That's also six.
Okay.
Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Abstentions?
I'm extending, I'm extending, it's kind of my extension of the vote, because the last time we didn't do the amendment.
So I was the last. Councillor Gately, Newell, Stutchbury and Hirons and Ahmed, that's five abstentions. So that's a tie, so it's mayor's final vote.
Okay, well, I vote for giving the Holiday Club the money.
We're still on the recommendations, I think, madam chair. If we move to item eight three on the agenda.
So have we sorted that now, Paul?
Yeah, 8.2, we've made the decision on, yes, the church will have the money. So as Mike said, it's 8.3 now.
Okay.
The resources.
Right, everybody happy with 8.3?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, 8.4. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And the somewhat lengthy 8.5. I don't propose to go down each bit.
I'll go on.
Has there anyone wanted to speak on that?
Yeah, councillor Gately has a hand.
Okay.
Yes, Margaret.
Yeah, I've already declared an interest as chair of the Buckingham Fair Trade Town Steering Group. And I think that's what's referred to. It's really more of a question than anything. We have, and this came up when I was part of the grants workshop. We've not been, the Fair Trade Town Group hasn't been in receipt of a grant in the normal sense of the word. What we've had was a budget we could draw on under the TCE for when we incurred expenditure, appropriate expenditure. So it would be quite a shift if we went from that to being a grant. Although I can see anomalies and I think I raised that in the working group. I just want to be clear that this would be a significant shift.
You don't, of course, have to take it up if you don't want to.
No, well, and of course, we've only used the budget when we've needed to. And we, many years, we've spent very little. But you know, I think with a grant, you'd be asking for a grant for specific items. Whereas with the budget, we've tended to put invoices in for, as they've arisen.
Yeah.
Including public indemnity insurance, which councillor Smith alerted us to the need to have some years ago.
Well, we're still on whether we agree these, do we need to take them all one at a time or all together?
Mike, councillor Stutchbury has a hand.
Yeah, thank you, town clerk. Yeah, 8.5, we'd be minded when we agree that. 8.5 in the recommendation, we're on the bottom one, aren't we? Which is 8.4, 8.5 of 8.4, 8.5.13. Does that make, is that better, Mike? Thank you. Now, we have to be minded when agreeing that is, we are agreeing a precept. Of course, I'm happy that that will, if agreed tonight, will go on to the next agenda of the events committee, which will proceed planning next week. But we have to be minded of that, that is events to precept for, where the other ones are grants. So when you agree in that, you realise you're agreeing that in the precept. When you do it, that's slightly different than a grant. That means you've already agreed that we should raise extra revenue for that. So when you get that in the precept, don't challenge it, because you've already voted for it. And the elements of that, I think, was a good view, that we should do a summer fair for charity for organisations to encourage people to be able to raise their own money in the community now. That was a good idea and the work that went into the grants committee was a really good discussion and whatever. But I think members just need to be minded when they agree that, that's slightly different than anything else on there, because it's actually not asked us to precept. So I think it's a positive thing to do. Whether we can do it with Covid, big question. But we can start planning for that if it's agreed tonight. And where we do it in the summer, where we do it in the preceding summer, that will be circumstances for a dip, but the planning for it can start. That's the important thing. circumstances for the dip, but the planning for it can start. That's the important thing.
And councillor O'Donoghue had a hand as well.
Okay, Lisa.
Thanks, Mike. Um I don't know if my um youth club bit will come under one of these. So if Nina could just make a note that that's where my
You're interested.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, you, at the moment, you're one of the three yearly grant ones, aren't you? Yeah, well, that will continue, but roll over to a four-year one. Everybody happy with these, some fourteen?
I suppose we agree.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. That's me done for the time being then.
Oh, mine.
Okay, we shall move on to item nine to receive question reports from Buckinghamshire. Council councillors. See, Robin's hand up there.
Have we got any? Oh, yeah.
We've got councillor, we've got Charlie Clare and councillor Mordu as well, Robin.
Okay, I can't see Charlie at the moment, but, oh, there he is.
Mayor, I do know that Charlie needs to go in about ten minutes to pick his son up.
Okay.
I'm quite happy to let Charlie go first.
Okay, let's go Charlie first.
Thank you, Chair. That's very kind of you and and great timing. And so I suppose the the main thing to talk about is there's the obviously picking up from the motion um that the Buckingham Town Council had just over a week ago. There has been work going on at the Buckingham tip. Uh there are new bays open there now, which has reduced queuing. Uh and and anecdotally, that seems to have improved the problem. Uh the truth is, is that as the rain comes, that probably does more to reduce the queuing than anything else. Um uh as you know, also from today, um the tip has asked that users wear a mask. Um uh that's just to 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 take the really the 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 burden of pressure off staff there from keeping meters apart whilst they're trying to get their stuff in the bins. And and we'll see how that goes. It's an extra security, but as they're outside, it's not strictly. Um yeah, it's an additional thing, isn't it? And so hopefully that has improved that. And uh and that's really my main area that I'm going to focus on today. Uh but have you got any other questions for me? I'd love to answer them.
Okay, any one else? Councillor Cole?
Thank you, Charlie. Um there's a notice went out that rubbish collections are going to be delayed this week because of the flooding. Can you update us on that?
Uh not more than they're going to be delayed. So they weren't able to get anywhere. As far as I understand, that it was actually flooding at the depot rather than road flooding, stopping them getting out. So they weren't able to bring them in rather than they weren't able to get to the collections. Uh I, as yet, um I haven't uh been able to get an update on when it's going to be, although you are the second person to ask me to listen today. So I have, I have already asked to find out, but I don't have the response yet.
Thank you.
Could I, could I help you there perhaps, Charlie, with your permission, madam chair? And that is that the rubbish people have put out um a message just this afternoon, latest this afternoon, saying that they're going on to the bank holiday arrangements. So Monday collections will be Tuesday, Tuesday collections Wednesday, Wednesday, et cetera. And that'll run through and get everybody done by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Mike, I owe you one. Thank you very much.
Another one.
And another one. Councillor Harvey and councillor Bloomfield have counted.
Councillor, yes.
Uh I've got a question for you, Charlie, but also for Howard and Robin, because obviously you're all Buckinghamshire councillors. Um it's my understanding that the site that got flooded was acquired originally by ABDC about twenty-odd years ago, uh when the previous depot was closed down to be sold off for development. Um and the site is shown on the development agency as a flood zone. Um and that the man who was in charge of things at that time, the officer in charge, had a chat with him this morning. He said he put a lot of effort into making sure that the nearby brooks were adequately maintained and free flowing. Um and also that there were valves put in to ensure that any water leaving the site, the water would not then back up there when the when the streams were filled. Could one of you, I don't mind which one of you, could one of you check out whether the proper amount of maintenance has been going on on that site to ensure that the valves are, the one-way valves are still working and that there's been proper vegetation removal um of the of the of the brook, so the water could be flowing through well. Because if the brook's not been cleared recently, that could be one of the reasons why all the householders and neighbours prevail are in being inconvenienced by not having their bins collected in the usual manner. So if one of you could look into that and report back, that would be most helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh well.
Sorry.
If 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 one of the others is jumping in, then I'll let them go for it. Otherwise, I'll I'll respond.
No, carry on, Charles.
Well, I'm stuck in the spot, actually, so.
Okay, go for it, Rob.
Um well, Charlie won't know. This has been an ongoing thing about maintenance historically in the district and about maintaining drainage areas. And councillor White will probably remember it as well. It might predate councillor White's time on there as well. But it's been an issue in Aylesby about maintenance and it's a pertinent question about when developments and stuff are done, they may. There was a huge lot of flooding in one part of Aylesby not long ago. Now, John puts me the question in right and I will take it forward and I'm sure um councillor White will follow it up as well. But this has been an historic problem in Aylesby because of the nature of the town, where it's flat and the area of the water that comes through there, these flooding air times have sometimes been through lack of maintenance of of flood alleviation stuff. And it might not be this time. It might be a simple fact that something went over cover somewhere and blocked it somewhere else. We don't know, but I think it's a pertinent question. But um.
Uh just, just, just because. Uh yeah, okay, brilliant. That 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 I just wanted to check that we were getting to to that point and it wasn't just more um uh supporting the 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 issue and it was providing a solution.
Well, that's what I spoke, Cap.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's all right. Uh very happy to do, uh for for Robin to to follow this up. And 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 also I'll reassure myself the answer to the same question. And uh so uh thanks for raising it, John. It's not something I was aware of. Good to know.
Okay, thank you. I think Terry had his hand up.
It's all decided, Charlie, that the collections, Charlie, on Facebook, they're correct, but on Buckinghamshire Council's own website, they're wrong. They've started off their collection as today, as the fourth of October. And that they will be collecting Tuesday, the fifth of October. So consequently, all through the week, they're, the days are out. That's on, that's on the website, their own website.
From Buckingham, so Buckinghamshire website's got, they've got last year's dates in or something like that. They're a day out.
But the Facebook dates might be correct.
Uh I just, I just hear from from Mike that that's been corrected as well. It's amazing what what goes on whilst you, when you have a day's work. I never, I never thought leaving your emails to the last thing in the day was was worthwhile, but clearly something sort themselves out. Mike, there's five are coming your way. Anything else? Sorry.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else waiting to speak?
No.
No, okay.
Uh well, thank you all. Lovely to see you all and I'm going to pick up my son, but I'll jump back on the call when I've got him home. All right.
Thanks, Charlie.
Cheers.
Bye.
So we'll move on to item ten, the action list.
Well, I think, you have got other councillors who can speak, but, you know.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Um I I gave way to Charlie because I have had children myself and I thought they were important.
Sorry, Robin. Because you've already spoken, that was not.
Mordu myself to speak, otherwise I wouldn't give way.
Carry on.
I'm happy to allow anybody else speak, but um just to say that obviously you will be aware that um the council has just published its um cabinet papers. If you read them tonight, there's their views on the white paper in the cabinet papers. Um you can take your own view on that. Um I've placed a motion to council to discuss that. I've also got a motion going to council, which I'm not sure where we are with yet, which is to do with the devolution. Um and the fact that the constitution changed them. I've also attended children's services and at the next children's services thing, you'll have educational standards for Buckinghamshire come to council. I'm understanding that um as you will know, the eleven plus will take place and in November. Um that, let's be minded to the fact that now with the way that education's done, Buckinghamshire County Council doesn't run the grammar schools, they're an academy group. It is a curious world when people can't take GCSEs and A-levels, but they can take the eleven plus um during Covid. But um but they they've taken that decision to pursue it along. The standards will be published um for send children and everything else at that next meeting. Um I've also will be going to the fire service meeting in the following week. I've also been to an audit meeting. I've been to planning training meetings. Um meetings about um prevent and I've been to other such meetings in the period of time. Frankly, uh the one downside of if you are free in the day of Zoom meetings is that you can attend so many more meetings on Zoom because you haven't got to spend all the time driving up and down the road. Um I'm not sure what it does for your psychology staring at your own face on a screen, but um you can go to lots of meetings. But I do urge you to read the cabinet papers which have been published tonight and take your own view on that because the council has um agreed a motion at the um previous council meeting to um move to ask questions about the government white paper. It might be comfort or not what the cabinet has said in their papers um in that thing. But we are in a situation where um devolution is a thing that the council's looking at. When I say devolution, the leader of the council is looking at um Buckinghamshire being a entity for economic growth separately. Um you know about the arc. When we say the arc, it's the growth arc across Buckinghamshire and across um which comes near us, which we are in the growth arc for development. And what, one of the problems that Bucks has got is that every, it's outvoted in the arc discussions where we had five votes with five councils. Now we've only got one and it's done on a majority vote when it used to be done differently. And butts could get voted to have development forced upon it by the people either side of us. So I believe the leader of the council is pushing the view that we should no longer be in that. What we haven't got clear clarity over is um other matters during the expressway. We always hope that the expressway might disappear, but we need to seek clarity or you need to seek clarity what he means by leaving the arc because that means we'd be a single entity economic growth area, of which we would bid for money from central government to develop Buckinghamshire um against its statistical neighbours, where before we'd been in partnerships. That's quite a big thing. There are some good points about that Buckinghamshire could predict its own future, its own growth, manage its own housing. I'm not sure what the government white paper does to add to that or support it. That's something you'll have to decide. But those are things going on and the council's obviously marching forward um in in its in its production. But that is one thing I think you need to go and look at and form your own views on. It's a big decision for Buckinghamshire. Um it's an awfully big decision for the leader of the council to take on without taking it to council. But I don't think his his reasoning is wrong. I think he's doing it out of good um for good reason, that he doesn't want Buckinghamshire to have other development forced upon it without um us having a vote on it. It's nonsense to be a collection of people voting you and then saying, well, you can have four hundred thousand houses. We don't want them. Um so his logic is somewhat properly proper on that. Um but the verdict's still out there and the discussion will go on. But any questions? No, you never questioned me, do you? Never mind. I'll change my name.
Okay, councillor Mordu?
Councillor Cole had a hand for Robin.
Sorry, councillor Cole had a question.
Through, through you, ma'am. Um Robin, I I have to also also see in the agenda, which is published today for the cabinet next week with your two questions on it. Thank you for those. Um one of the bigger questions, which the North Buck's um parish planning can make a call, whatever it is, is which Paul, Paul would be able to fill fill us in on is um how will the Buckinghamshire Council's response to the um white paper affect the VALP, the emerging VALP? And will they be discussing this that next week?
Um clue to that is I've not seen the cabinet papers apart from they were published today. I did read the astric extract for the um response to government white paper. I think that's a a a reasonable question. Please put it in writing to me. I will follow it up because just giving you a glib answer tonight wouldn't be appropriate. And um if you're giving me that, I'll follow it up. One of the things is that whatever happens in all this stuff, you have to be minded to the fact that if the government predicts growth, that might be one thing, but Buckinghamshire doing stuff for the art, that's a completely different prospect, isn't it? Um but I am minded to the fact that none of us have got a mandate to do anything for the public at the moment, have we? So um you know, we're all running on old mandates. So I don't know. Please put that in writing to me, Mark, and I'll get you a proper answer. I I think that's the proper way to deal with that.
Uh thank you. I will do that.
Okay, was there any other questions for Robin? No, okay, councillor Mordu?
Okay, first of all, Pembroke Road. Pembroke Road is in the middle of a major redevelopment scheme uh for the recycling. And part of that scheme was to reorientate where the actual recycling and the lorries were parked. It's basically on an island and the Bear Brook frequently floods, but not to extent it has done recently. I haven't been down there for a while, but part of the redevelopment was to try and stop some of the flooding occurring. Um so that's that one. Uh okay, I won't list out all the meetings I've attended. I don't see if there's much point in doing that, except I'll stress on the major ones. And one is the working group for the standards committee, which is working with the boundaries commission in the, looking at the number of councillors that should be on the authority and awards. They're not looking specifically at parish wards unless there's an implication where it might affect the number of uh county councillor members. None of these effects would, none of these changes would come into effect until after the next election. So it'll be in about four, four years' time. Um as far as planning goes, planning was written into the constitution. And it's a remit on the standards committee to actually look at the constitution, which we will be doing and there will be evidence being gathered about how um changes could be made for the better as far as planning goes. And it's important that when the questionnaire comes out, that the views of members and especially of town councils are registered and taken into account. And that applies not only for planning, it applies for the ward memberships. There was a working seminar held a couple of weeks ago, which Robin attended and and I did. There there will be changes within this current council because um you know, other things came up when I was at the the financial services scrutiny, that pretty well everything is over budget. And the reason why it's over budget is always said it's because of coronavirus. You can only blame coronavirus for so long. And it's interesting that um that there um there are uh people looking at how the money is being spent. It's not their money, it's your money that's being spent and whether it's being used for good effect. There are a number of other things, but prevent was an interesting one. The last prevent course went on too long. The question time went on for two hours. It was, it was just ridiculous. And I think a grip had to be, has to be taken on the Zoom meetings and how they actually schedule some of the meetings. Anyway, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Howard. I think councillor O'Donoghue has her hand up.
Uh she was stretching.
No, she was stretching. Okay. Anyone got any questions? No.
Oh, Stutchbury.
You're muted, Robin.
You've got a shame. Um Howard, could you define from the, you 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 alluded to the constitution being reviewed um on planning. Well, that is a long-term prospect. Um you also alluded to the um looking at the boundaries. Well, we've all seen the consultation that came out for members of Buckinghamshire Council to fill in. It was a tick box, very light-touch consultation. But my understanding, would you not agree, Howard, is that that there's going to be a proper consultation with town and parish councils? And what the boundary commission said is they take every submission And what the Boundary Commission said is they take every submission seriously. And they did say they're well averse to gerrymandering, so of the way these things are done. And they've seen it before. So I think the Buckingham Town Council has to take its view, because in Buckingham, would you not agree? The boundaries and how it comes out for Buckingham is Buckingham's consideration. There's also, would you not agree, the question of the parishes, the way the boundaries are in Buckingham? We've got like four wards where we used to have two, whether that needs to be entered. I'm not sure whether that can be considered, but would you not agree that those things that need to be looked at?
Two completely separate issues. The Boundary Commission, as far as the commission is concerned, everything is up for grabs. They start with a clean slate, in their words. I always doubt when words like that come out. They've got to start from somewhere. But what they're not doing is putting their proposals forward yet. They would rather formulate a proposal and then the parishes to comment and then to take those comments into account. So that's why it's a long process, you know, getting on for three years. The far as the constitution goes, that's another piece of work within the Standards Commission. And I can't see that going on for four years. It's going to be a lot quicker than that, because it's not, there's a number of parishes that aren't very happy with the way things are done. And representation will be made to try and see how it can become fairer. The council's way of doing it is to try and say that it, well, it's not all right, because there are problems. And we all know there's problems, but because it's part of the constitution, it can't be altered just like that. And that's why it has to go through the Standards Group, well, through a small party consisting of probably about six people. And then it'll go for the Standards Committee, who will then debate it. And then eventually it will come to council, because the only people that can actually change the constitution is the council. But that is not going to be in four years' time. It's going to be within the time of this current, I would foresee, within this current council, which will be up to May next year.
Thank you. Any more questions? No. Okay, thank you for that, Howard. We'll move on to item 10, the action list. Anybody got any points to raise on that? See councillor Cole's hand up there.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, at the interim meeting that we had on the 14th of September, a member of the public raised three questions, which the mayor confirmed the council provided a written response to the questions raised. I looked on the agenda tonight in vain, I've looked in the action list tonight in vain. Could you tell me when that will be happening?
So those questions related to the interim council back in July, which is currently the subject of another discussion. So until that other discussion has ended, we can't formally respond.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, anyone else got a hand up anywhere? No, not that I can see. Okay, we shall move on to item 11, the Diversity and Inclusion Working Group. So it's to agree which councillors will take part in the group. I'll pass you over to Paul to explain how we're going to vote on that.
So firstly, for those of you who haven't seen it, councillor O'Donoghue sent her statement round.
Oh, yes.
Too long before the meeting, health reasons mentioned, wasn't able to do that beforehand. The, what we're going to do is we're going to take votes for the eight candidates, one at a time, in the order they are on the agenda. So to remind councillors that the council decided the council could have six representatives from the town council on the working group. So that means that each councillor now has six votes. So we're going to take votes for the eight candidates, one at a time. Each councillor can only vote six times. And clearly the councillors with the most, the six councillors with the highest number of votes will go forward and be part of the working group. In the event of the tie, as ever, the chair will have the casting vote or votes. So this might take quite a long time for me to make sure I've recorded all the votes correctly against the right names and then added them up, just to make sure nobody's slipping in a seventh vote.
Okay, everybody happy with that?
Yep.
All right.
Cole has a question.
Yeah, could I just, if I could just ask, ma'am, can a councillor vote for oneself?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So you might as well.
Okay, do you want to start reading those out, Paul, or don't need to read them out?
If you read them out one at a time, ma'am, I guess.
Okay, so I need. I've lost my list.
Starts with councillor Ahmed.
Okay, so we're voting, it's all the votes for councillor Ahmed at the moment, yeah?
So councillor Smith, Gately, Bloomfield, Strain Clark, Ralph, Newell, Maudie, Stutbury, Harvey, Ahmed. Did I miss anybody out? I don't think so. Okay, councillor Cole, what's next?
Councillor, first of all, councillor Cole.
So councillors, Gately, Cole, Fry, Mahi, Maudie, O'Donoghue, Hirons, Harvey. And that is everybody.
Do you have councillor Ralph on there?
I have councillor Ralph.
Yeah.
There we go, thank you.
So how many's left?
I had councillor Mahi. So councillor Gately. You can vote for yourself councillor Gately if you want to. So councillor Gately, Bloomfield, Strain Clark, Cole, Ralph, Newell, Maudie, Stutbury, Hirons, Harvey and Ahmed.
So did you have councillor Smith down?
I did not, thank you very much, councillor Smith. Okay, councillor Maudie. So voting for councillor Maudie, councillor Gately, councillor Cole, councillor Fry, councillor Mahi, councillor Maudie, councillor O'Donoghue, the Hirons. That's everybody. With councillor Newell, votes for councillor Newell, councillor Gately, councillor Bloomfield.
Who are we voting for now?
So this is councillor Newell. Councillor Gately, councillor Bloomfield, councillor Smith, councillor Strain Clark, councillor Ralph, councillor Newell, councillor Maudie, Stutbury, Harvey, Ahmed. Okay, votes for councillor O'Donoghue. So councillors, Gatesley, G Collins, Bloomfield, Strain Clark, Cole, Fry, Mahi, Stutbury, O'Donoghue, Hirons, P Collins. That's everybody. Okay, votes for councillor Ralph. Councillor Ralph, councillor Smith, councillor Bloomfield, councillor Strain Clark and Cole, Ralph, Fry, Newell, Stutbury, O'Donoghue, Hirons, Harvey and Ahmed. And Ma, they said Mahi, and Mahi. So everybody, okay. Votes for councillor Stutbury. So councillor Smith, Bloomfield, Strain Clark, Ralph, Newell, Stutbury, Hirons, Harvey and Ahmed. That's all the candidates and all the votes. But just wait one moment while I. We are using Excel this evening, I'm sure it'll be fine. Okay, so no councillors have voted more than six times. So sorry for the delay. So by my calculation, councillor Gatesley has 12 votes. Councillors Ahmed and councillor Newell each have 10 votes. Councillor O'Donoghue has 11 votes. One, two, three, four, five, so that is five councillors, one place remaining. Councillors Cole and councillor Stutbury each have nine votes. So councillors Cole and Stutbury are tied for the sixth place. So madam mayor, it's for you to choose between those two with your casting vote between Cole and.
What was councillor Ralph's couple of figures?
Oh, sorry, the other figures are councillor Maudie had seven votes. Oh, councillor Ralph had 12 votes.
That's what I thought.
Which case?
Hang on, so councillor Ralph had 12 votes, councillor Gately had 12 votes, councillor Ahmed had 10 votes, councillor Newell had 10 votes, councillor O'Donoghue had 11 votes.
And the other ones.
So that's five councillors, plus the one additional, which is for the mayor to choose in a second. And councillor Maudie had seven votes is the other result. So it's still the case for councillor, for the mayor to choose between councillor Cole and Stutbury.
Go on, Geraldine, make your choice.
Geraldine, you're muted.
I think I'll have to go for councillor Cole.
Oh, I'll forgive you.
You forgive me, okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So we've got councillor Gately, councillor Ralph, councillor Ahmed, councillor Newell, councillor O'Donoghue and councillor Cole, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Well done. Okay. We shall move on to item 12, Covid-19, to receive and discuss a verbal report from our town clerk.
Thank you, so a brief update on Covid-19. As you know, all our services are mostly open now. Lace Hill is being well used, although not fully. And many of the hires are having less people access than previously the case. Obviously, government guidelines, as government guidelines change, exactly what's possible changes with that. The shop mobility service is open on Saturdays, but not Tuesdays at the moment. That way, it's very difficult to safely wash down the equipment in shop mobility. So a week between hires is more appropriate at the moment. Work within the office is completed, so we've now got the additional partition in the office. So we can have four or five staff pretty much safely working one time in the office. We've usually got two of us in at a time. Everybody's in at least one day a week now. Still not open to the public and taking all kinds of measures to ensure people are staying apart and staying safe. That's it really, in terms of town council's Covid update for now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Councillors Fry.
Thank you. It's sort of related to the Covid, but what you said in your report, Paul, was that the office had been finished. What happened with the see-through doors and the blinds? Did we correct that?
Yeah, so the blind, when we discussed it at resources, the decision was for me to work with councillor Smith to clarify if we can put in blinds into the windows at an appropriate budget. And actually, they came in at a budget which was lower than I think I'd obviously expected. So we've gone ahead with those blinds in the office.
All right.
Councillor O'Donoghue has a hand.
Okay, councillor O'Donoghue. I've lost you for a moment.
And it's for you, Chair, can I ask Paul how Lace Hill is coming along? Because we're opening up youth centre as of tonight for youth clubs. So I just wondered how Sam was getting on up there.
Sam has done a huge amount of work at Lace Hill, both in cleaning and doing risk assessments and every time things change. And working, obviously, everybody has to provide a risk assessment that works with their governing body as well as with our requirements. So it's making sure everybody's working within their own requirements, cleaning between hires as far as we can. So it's been a lot of work and obviously we're getting a bit less money because there's less people in. But it is now being well used, I'd say, for circumstances.
That's good to know. Also, has she got a QR code up there for the MHS thing? Because we've got that in our youth centre.
Yeah, we have put the QR code up there.
Brilliant, thank you.
Any more questions from anyone else? No. Okay, we'll move on to item 13, the Morton Road crossing, also to receive a report from the town clerk.
So just to highlight that the Morton Road crossing is a temporary crossing. So it's not subject to the same stringent criteria as a permanent crossing would be. So if we do want to push ahead and seek a permanent crossing, that would still be subject to a much more detailed analysis about what was safe and appropriate before it went in. I don't know how long the crossings got left, but as I say, it is one of the temporary measures that's in place from Buckinghamshire Council. Therefore, it was a much lighter touch process of agreeing whether to put it in or not. Therefore, it was a much lighter touch process of agreeing whether to put it in or not.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that? No. Okay. We should move on to item 14 then, the budgets to receive a revised budget forecast. So everybody got that?
I think we just noted, don't we, too?
Note it, any, yeah, councillor Cole's got his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Page four, under expenditure, 103 councillors, mayors duties and mayors.
Mark, you've got muted.
Yeah, sorry, everybody. Page four expenditure, 103 is councillors' expenses. The mayor's duties, the mayor's civic and the councillors' mileage expenses haven't changed at all since last year. Yet we've had eight months now of Covid and little prospect of being able to travel or make mileage. I doubt if any of us have been out of that official duty. Is that figure just really a guidance or should we lower that portion of the money from there somewhere else? Which might be struggling for funding.
Through your chair, if I can just say that the figures on the left of the budget we set, the figures on the right hand, they're not a new budget I've set, they're my forecast of what the expenditure is likely to be. So I haven't moved any budgets round, I'd come through councillors to do that. There are some things where I forecast now, I've tried to be conservative. So there are others where I'm sure we will underspend. But at the time, even two or three weeks ago when I was doing this revised forecast, things have changed a bit since then. Obviously as we move closer to, and there were some things where I forecasted we'll spend six months worth on the basis that we might all be free again in a couple of weeks' time. So certainly councillor mileage, I don't think anybody's claimed any mileage yet this year. If you have a case, please put it in, but as you rightly say councillor Cole, it's very unlikely. And certainly staff travel is way, way down as well this year. So I'd like to think we can get some staff travelling before the end of March, but we'll have to wait and see. But I certainly don't take the right-hand column as final at all, that's just my forecast.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay, we shall move on to item 15, which are the 20 mile an hour speed limits.
Chair, can I just highlight this item?
Yeah.
Obviously we'll vote on the motion shortly, but having spoken to the officer working on the community board, the 20 mile a space, our speed review is something we could apply to the community board for. Process would be we'd apply by the end of this month. They would then work out what they think the cost might be. And there might well be an expectation or request of the town council to pay a contribution towards that cost. Obviously until we know what that is, we can't have a hypothetical discussion about numbers. Whether we could get that number back in time for pre-set this year or not, I don't know. But they will try and achieve that if they can. So it may be that one of the things councillors wish to discuss or agree is to simply put in a request for the community board to give us a price and consider 20 mile an hour speed limits through their process for next year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got any questions on that? Councillor Cole?
Yes, thank you. If I could ask through you, ma'am, Paul, have you been given any indication of the cost yet?
No.
Right, well, I took the trouble of researching online. This was 2017 Essex County Council, working with Ringway Jacobs and bearing in mind this is 2017. 20 mile per hour zone, starting point including five entry points and 20 speed cushions, £125,000. Additional costs may be identified as the project develops and further risks identified. So I should imagine at the moment, you know, with four years down the line, you're not going to be looking at much under £150,000 to implement this plus other hidden costs. So I think members should be aware of that. I looked right through the internet, try and get a rough guide and that's, that's the only one I could really find, 2017.
Councillor Smith has his hand up.
Thank you. I think you mentioned councillor Cole, that included speed humps and that sort of thing. Which need not be the case.
Five entry points and 20 speed cushions, yes.
Speed cushion, 20 of them, that's where most of the cost would occur, I would imagine. Not all 20 mile an hour limits that I've seen have got any sort of speed reduction stuff at all, other than just the signage. Which would reduce the cost, that quoted cost considerably.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Councillor Stutbury has a hand.
Councillor Stutbury?
I think it's very useful to read other people's councils' things, but that isn't Buckinghamshire Council. I attended the online, the Transport Select Committee, the link was there. The cabinet member said that he would look favourably on supporting members bringing forward schemes. I don't think he would have said that had he not believed what he was saying. The scheme that we're looking at, we don't know the cost of the scheme we're looking at. The principle is of a traffic order. Now, the traffic order will be for a certain amount. And to use information which isn't on the agenda, not with the current stuff, the motion which you're going to discuss allows that to be discussed at a later date. We've got a single opportunity if the motions agreed to go for the funding. And to traffic or a traffic regulation order, which we noted in planning just recently for Shandos Road, they put in for £17,000, I believe, in the section 106 to that. Which, as councillor Mike Smith quite rightly said, don't equate hard standing and speed bumps and that type of thing. I don't think that's what we're looking for. I think we're looking for a speed reduction, which has got absolutely nothing to do. It could be that those councils insist on traffic calming. There's other places in Buckinghamshire where you can go where 20 mile an hour speed limits have been introduced without traffic calming. I've been here before with Buckinghamshire Council years ago. When we looked at traffic calming and they tried that old favourite chestnut of lighting and stuff. If you put in speed bumps, you have to interchange all the lighting. If a councillor doesn't want you to do something, they can find various reasons to do it. What this is, the motion which we will be discussing is about, is following on from the agreed motion that we agreed as a council to pursue these things. It could be at the end of all our work that we are unable to pursue it. But not to try would be wrong. So I think, I thank councillor Cole for his information, but it isn't about, I don't believe, putting in speed bumps all around Buckingham. I think it's about lowering speed limits outside schools and inappropriate developments. I don't know if anyone's enjoyed driving over a speed bump if you go into London, I never have. Not at all, I'm not that good a driver, Mark, I tend to hit them at the wrong place. Always seems to put me out of sync in the chair, but that's all I've got to say on that.
Councillor Hirons has a hand.
Yeah, councillor Hirons?
Yes, I'd like to, I'm not at all sure about what area we're talking about. Because I mean, this is going to affect hugely the amount of money it costs, whichever way you do it. Because if you're only just talking, I'm just making this up, Shandos Road and the one past the other primary schools, that's one thing. But if you're talking about the whole central area and every one of them has to have the legal amount of signs, it's obviously going to be much more, so I'm just not at all sure what we're voting for here, except a vague sort of nice idea rather real strong emotion.
Well, if I could help you there councillor, we're not actually voting on anything at the moment. The motion is the next item on the agenda. And so you can vote on that, you can't vote on this because if you're against the motion, you have a chance to vote on that. The elements of where you put it, a traffic order is a traffic order. How you then progress that over a number of years, once you've got a traffic order, is entirely up to you. But it's getting a traffic order agreed and the discussion about that, that's all we're trying to achieve. We're not trying to build, plan and do anything, we're trying to get the principle established and the funding in place. The discussions come afterwards, you'll have plenty of time to decry it and spoil it and say it's silly thereafter. But to stop it at this stage, when we've been told by the town clerk it's a pretty reasonable refunding request, would be less than constructive and probably irresponsible.
Well, I think it's very irresponsible to be talking about something which has no idea of which areas we're going, trying to reduce 20 miles an hour on.
I would come to that in the motion, I won't ask you now.
Okay, are there any more hands up on councillor Try?
Thank you. I would like some clarification on the motion, if I could please councillor Stutbury. I see it as three areas here and I'm not too sure which we are voting on. Because first of all, it asks for the investigation of costs. And then it's the request of monies from the community board. And then it's whether we put the scheme adding to the pre-set. So are they three different things or should they be sequential in, in time? And really what you're doing is just the first part, which is investigating whether the council should investigate the cost, full stop. And all the other items on that motion is then at another time.
Well, as we're not talking about the motion, I can't answer that question because we're talking about what the town clerk said. If you want to move into the motion, I can do that during that debate. And what I'm not going to do is debate the motion now on a basis of information the town clerk gave us. I think that's very unfair. I think that's very unfair.
I do apologize.
To allow that wouldn't be very democratic, would it?
Are we all happy to move on to 15.2, which is councillor Bloomfield?
We've got to move the recommendation from Paul that this is noted.
Okay, and then we'll move on to 15.2 councillor Stutbury's motion.
Well firstly, thank you for the pre-discussion, at least we know where we are. I've never seen a pre-discussion of a motion at the town council before, but this is the first time for that. I don't think the town clerk's information was for that. That aside, the motion is proposed by myself and was meant to be worded second by councillor Anthony Ralph, but that never made itself onto the paperwork, even though he sent that in. I propose that Buckingham Town Council investigates the cost of a traffic regulation order, associated costs for the following, the speed limits of appropriate areas in the town. The town should be 20 miles an hour per hour. The request that the community board investigates the necessary funding to implement such a scheme. And that the town council considers whether to contribute for such a scheme should be necessary. All right, and if it goes on underneath there, because it goes on to another page, I put the motion to the council, having listened to the discussions of Buckinghamshire County Council in the Environment Committee, where the cabinet member, as I said earlier, said that he was minded to support such things at the Transport Select Committee. And I'm happy to take questions after the seconding on it. But the principle of this was very much to follow, councillors voted unanimously, the policy of the council, you will recall, was to support 20 mile an hour speed limit where appropriate. I happen to be in another place which unfortunately none of you are. And when I see an opportunity for this council to meet a requirement and something that it's agreed as policy, I felt it was my responsibility to bring it to you, to give you opportunity in a, to actually altogether go forward and meet a requirement of what the council has agreed and was wishing to put into its local plan as part of its planning process. And to miss this funding opportunity means it could result in another generation of children if we succeed, not having this extra protection. Because as we all know, a child who gets hit by a car 20 miles an hour has a greater chance of survival than a child who's hit by 30. Yes, there's all the problems of regulating this, but not to move forward with it, I believe, would be irresponsible of us, being as we've already agreed the policy.
Do we have a second just for that motion?
Oh, I'm happy to second.
Councillor Ralph wants to second it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine councillor Ralph. Okay, councillor Cole had his hand up to question that, I think.
I put my hand up to second it, but I was.
Okay, any questions on this that we have from anyone? Councillor Ralph?
Yeah, just as the secondor, I would just like to say that we had the motion, which was unanimous, that we're all keen on 20 miles an hour. And councillor Stutbury seems to have found a way forward where some finance might be available. So we can actually bring that to some level of realisation. And so often we have good intentions and we don't get any further. And here's a very practical further step. It may fail, it may fall in later stages, but let's give it a good try at least.
Okay, anybody else got any questions?
I have the right. Well, I just, if that's, we're moving to the vote.
Councillor Hirons had a question, Robin.
Okay.
To define what you mean by appropriate areas.
Councillor Hirons, you will have a good memory, won't you, of the meetings that you sat through when we discussed 20 mile an hour speed limits in the planning committee? And when we took that forward to put into the local plan. What was discussed, as you will recall, because you have a good memory, is that we discussed appropriate areas around schools where it was appropriate, in housing developments where we felt it was appropriate. And what we wouldn't at that stage, because it was an aspiration to put it into a local plan, we wouldn't at that stage determine the particular areas. But then we discussed it in length and you didn't, if I recall right, think it was a positive move. And then we voted on it, the majority voted on it, and then we came forward with it going to be into our emerging local plan. Do you recall that as a rough estimate of where we were? I'm not at this point telling you where to put traffic calming. What I'm trying to achieve councillor Hirons, is the ability for you to decide as a council where it goes. I am not the bountiful knowledge in this, but what I'm trying to do, and my best possible, is to achieve something for once for those people as we've been given an opportunity. And to miss that, I think the discussions about the appropriate place come afterwards. We don't put the horse behind the car, you put the horse in front of the car. And what you're trying to do is talk about something we don't know the answer to. Because that will come after the deliberations. Does that help you?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
I can't help you any more than that chap, I'm sorry.
Any further questions from anyone? No. Okay, shall we move to the vote on that? Everyone in agreeance with this motion?
It's in favour councillor Smith, councillor Gatesley, G Collins, Bloomfield, Cole, Ralph, Mahi, Newell, O'Donoghue, Stutbury, Strain Clark and Ahmed. I make that 12.
And anyone against?
Against councillors Try, Hirons, P Collins, that's three.
Any abstentions?
Abstentions councillor Mordu. Councillor Harvey just dipped out of the meeting back again during the vote.
So I make that motion carried.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we shall move on to item 16, the community board funding, to receive another report from the town clerk.
So I've given you quite a lot of information about community board funding, which you may well have seen before already. Really, this is just to, in addition to the 20 mile an hour speed limit we've just talked about, this is just to note what I think of the schemes that we're currently working on in the office to put bids in for. Noting that a lot of this work will be done through the subgroups, so those councillors who are on subgroups will be talking about schemes within their subgroups, hoping for promoting what the town council wants to do. But so A, whether those are the correct things and whether we're missing anything really.
Okay, so we have some recommendations, have we?
So it's recommended that the council agrees to apply to the board for as many of the listed schemes as viable as possible.
Okay.
And so those schemes are under item two of the report.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions? Any questions on that? No, okay.
Councillor Gaetley.
No, sorry councillor Gaetley.
Thank you, I'm just slightly confused because haven't we just agreed that we'd ask about the 20 mile an hour speed limit?
We have, but there were two or three funding streams within the boards, so that doesn't preclude us from applying for other things as well.
Does that clarify? Sorry councillor Hirons has his hand up as well.
Yes, haven't we had quite a lot of requests which we were sympathetic to for a crossing down in Nelson Street? And especially with all the increased number of people living off Tingewick Road coming down and therefore wanting to cross the, cross Nelson Street. Wouldn't that perhaps make sense?
I agree, Paul, yes. Anyone else? Councillor, oh sorry councillor Stutchbury?
I absolutely quite sympathise with councillor Hirons' view. But we have a report for us today, which was based upon decisions and meetings where we met. And I could introduce 25 things on this tonight where I think we ought to change councillor Stutchbury. And that was the point where we should have made our choices. What I will say is I put a motion on the agenda today to add an additional thing, because I took the courtesy of allowing you to vote for it. And I think this community board is going to go on for some years. And I think what we should do is seek to progress that in another year's funding round. I think it's a reasonable request, but to put it in now at the late day, I'm going to start and suggest lots of things I might like. But we did have a process, didn't we, and meetings when we considered this. And we can't run a council like that where you just throw it in at the last minute. I put a motion on the agenda tonight to try and get agreement, which I'm thankful for, we did.
Yeah.
This was discussed before, it never went to a motion, but it certainly was discussed. But I mean, I accept your point, Robin, that we can't sort of reinvent the wheel tonight. But I think we ought to think about some of these things that were quite, you know, had quite a lot of community support is the word I would look for. You know, that people were asking for.
Okay, so are we suggesting the recommendations that are, well, it says possible Buckingham scheme? So is it still possible or is it still open for additions, Paul, or not?
Obviously, we could apply for what we want for it. It will be a movable feast and the board will be there for some time. So really, I'm asking for agreement that they're the six things to be focused on plus a 20 mile an hour speed limit at the moment. And if anything else, if people want to go other things on agendas, then they're welcome to do so.
I propose that we agree that, Chairman, and add that we will be looking at that scheme for the future year.
Okay.
Okay, I can see Paul's point. I think the crossing on Nelson Street should have gone before Post Park Sculptures project, but there you go.
You couldn't quite agree, Madam Mayor, but why didn't you propose it then? And bring it forward in the scheme of paperwork? There was meetings to do this. We can't do it all at the back end of it. It's not very professional, is it?
No, I was under the impression that had been put forward at some time, but could be wrong. Okay, so, sorry, Terry has his hand up.
And councillor Smith as well.
I can see them on here, Chairman. I can be sympathetic to the pedestrian crossing and also the toilet's important part. But the BMX scooter track has been on there since a year dot. And I think we should try and progress that. Obviously, a pedestrian crossing, more than I've probably come before that, but we need to really BMX now. It's been on there, what, five years?
Twenty.
So I'd like to propose that we, that the BMX track is pushed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Was there anyone else waiting to speak on that?
Councillor Smith.
Councillor Smith.
I was simply going to comment on the, on the discussion about Nelson Street, a crossing in Nelson Street, which was considered and then ruled out by Transport for Bucks because of the road layout and all the rest of it. And that was considered way back when there was a partially sighted gentleman who crossed the thing every day, rode every day to get his paper and so forth. I think we've got a good stock here. These six items have been on various agendas for heaven knows how long, particularly the BMX. I think we could vote on these and then add any others opportunities arise. But we do need to make a start on these and, you know, from the available funding that we're aware of. So I think we simply, we should simply stick to agreeing the recommendations, the two recommendations in the paper. And then come back to it as opportunities arise.
Yeah.
Okay councillor Newell had her hand up.
I just wanted to agree with the other councillors that the BMX track is really important. We first of all agreed that we wanted one about 20 years ago. And thought we had the ideal spot in the heartlands. And Elsbury Vale agreed with us at that time. Subsequently, they've not agreed. So the sooner we get one up at Lace Hill, the better. It would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to take the recommendations 1.1?
Can I just see clarity? See clarity, because we've just agreed the motion in advance. That now becomes part of this and agreed in its totality, because we'll have to, we've agreed something, then we're agreeing something else. It has to be included in this agreement because of the previous vote. Because when the minutes are read, it won't look right. It will look like we've agreed these five after we've agreed that. So I think it needs, the minutes need to say when we agree is including the traffic 20 mile an hour limit. Do you understand the logic of that? Because otherwise it, we're voting against it as soon as we voted for it. And that wouldn't be very clever, would it? So I think it needs to be included thereafter in this conversation because of the previous vote, we've committed it.
Okay, you all happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're agreeing the recommendations and to include the previous one of the 20 mile an hour limit.
Agreed.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so we shall move on to item 17, the planning notification to receive a written report from the planning clerk. Councillor Gaetley?
I'd just ask, it's not clear to me where that phone box is, the last one standing.
Yes, where is it, the last phone?
It's in Market Hill outside where M&amp;Co.
Correct.
Yeah.
In the way.
Thank you.
If you don't notice it.
Okay, anybody else got any, sorry, Robin's got his hand up.
I think, I think we should thank Catherine for raising this. There isn't a quaint, it's a quaint thing that that communities can't have the last telephone box removed. And again, we owe her a vote of thanks for bringing this to us, because that would mean there'd be no telephone box in Buckinghamshire for a large population to use. And I know it's in the town centre and it's annoying for the fair and it'd be better if it had been left down by the post office. But it is where it is and it's the last telephone box and we should resist strongly it being removed. I know everybody's got a mobile phone and that, but if your phone breaks or you're, you're out and you're a child without a mobile phone and you need to phone your parents or an accident happens, at least you can phone the emergency services. And leaving it there might well one day save somebody's life.
Absolutely, I agree. Councillor Smith?
Yeah, I certainly think we should, we should oppose this, but principally on the grounds that they haven't followed the procedures which are laid down for the removal of the thing. I very much doubt that it has much use, if any, or if it'll get much, if any, in the future. But there's clearly, clearly a lot of rules that come into play which haven't been followed. And we should insist that they do, otherwise that is absolute rubbish.
Agreed.
Councillor O'Donoghue has his hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Just following on from what Robin was saying, really. It's not just good to have it there for people who've, who've got broken mobile phones. But if anybody's at risk from personal violence or in, you know, situations at home where they don't have access to a phone, they're not allowed a phone. Or they've got to be careful who they phone. A phone box on the street could save their life.
Well said.
Good point.
Well said.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're all happy with that, agreed with that?
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay, item 18, the sport and art awards. To discuss and agree whether to make an award in 2020 in the open. Paul, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, I was.
Sorry.
The worst person to speak on that, because the amount I know about ladies hockey could be written on a grain of rice. But I just, I'd just seen something in the paper saying they'd done very well, when I've seen that before, they've done very well. And nobody else was recommending anything else, so I thought, let's go for it then. But I can't make myself a strong enough case, except they seem to have won a lot of silverware or something.
Councillor Smith?
Yes, I agree. They've got enough, they've earned enough silverware to sink several mantelpieces, I would think. They've certainly done very well. I would be in full support of offering them an award.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else want to speak on? Robin?
Yeah, we voted on this previously, I believe.
Yeah, they have said it before.
I proposed that Buckingham secondary school rugby team would beat Marlow, which is very important to me to beat Marlow. Got an award for playing rugby and whatever, but that was voted down at the time and we went with the hockey team. So I remember we had a discussion about it in that same discussion. We discussed other awards, which I note aren't on here. So why are we doing this? I thought we'd actually agreed it. Or was that something that never got took forward? Or am I remembering that this is the second time it's come up?
Yeah, Chair, Chair Three, if I may.
Yes, certainly.
Remind councillors, we have discussed this, but it was in the informal meeting of council. So this is on the agenda, because while it's been discussed and voted on informally, it hasn't been done so formally. So we can't allocate the awards until we've been through a formal vote.
Yeah.
And this is the only decision that was actually agreed at that informal meeting.
Yeah.
I was.
Agreed. Okay, so everybody in favour of that? Yes? Sorry, do you want to? Is that agreed? Yes? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Right, item 19, devolution. So that's again down to you, Paul.
Thank you, Chair. So to remind members that we put a bid in to be part of a pilot project for taking on additional devolved services. But we agreed the bid, I think, back in February or something and submitted it formally. It was delayed because staff were taken off that project to do immediate response to Covid. Staff are now back on this. They've now agreed there to be 14 pilots, where we're only going to be five. So that's 14, one in each of the community board areas. So they've asked us to be the pilot council in the Buckinghaman Villages Community Board area, which is good news. We submitted a list of things we'd like to discuss being devolved to us. They come back and said it's going to be a process over two or three years, so there's going to be phase one, phase two, phase three. So in what for us will be year one, so phase one. I'm frozen. Councillors, hear me?
Yes, okay to us.
Okay, fine. You've all stopped moving. So in year one, they've agreed to discuss with us some of the green spaces in town and Morton Road toilets. So they've not, they're not prepared at this point to discuss any play areas. Or the land outside the old jail cattle pens, or the bullring, or Verney Close, or the youth centre. So I've got a meeting this week to work out exactly what the details of the offer are. Because I don't at the moment know if they're offering just a revenue budget or whether they're offering freehold of the land, which is what we'd really like. So it's early days. I'll keep reporting back to councillors when I know more information.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stutchbury?
Yeah, I think it's important we push on with this. That what we've got in the devolution offer, from what I've seen. It varies throughout the county. I think those questions are for after this. To find out why different things were offered to different people. And there may be real reasons around that. But I think that we push on with this because it's a move forward. The council isn't going nowhere. We're going nowhere. And they've had a short space of time to get to this. So we should allow the town clerk, I propose, to go away and negotiate on our behalf. And then when it's later on to come back with the formal proposals, at that point, we would agree it. Because he wouldn't be able to agree it without us agreeing it. So just leave him to get on with it, I believe. And come back to us when he's got a formal proposal in writing, which tells us whether we're going to have the land, the assets or just maintain it. What the toilets are, what the cost is going to be. That's what the town clerk's there to do, to do the investigations and bring it back to us in a report.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
Okay.
Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we shall move on to item 20, the elections for May 2021.
Okay, so this is just to update councillors, as I have done in writing, that the cabinet office have written to Buckinghamshire Council to say the elections will be going ahead for our level and for the county council in May 2021. They won't just be posted, there will be a proper election.
Okay, thank you. And item 21, our reports from representatives on outside bodies, just ask to note the reports.
Noted.
Yeah.
Okay, and item 22, the mayor of engagements, just to receive a list of events attended. And item 23, any chairs announcements? I don't think I've got any big announcements there. And the date of the next meeting would be, the interim would be Monday, the 2nd of November. And full council Monday, the 23rd of November. Sorry councillor Cole has his hand up there. You're muted, Mark.
It was to do with chairs, chairs announcements, Mayor. I wonder if you perhaps on behalf of the council could thank Buckingham Rotary for the work they've been doing in helping run the flu clinics up at Lace Hill School. They've done an absolutely brilliant job. It's ongoing. I know there are members of this council who are involved and I think that should be recognised by the council, that the assistance they've been giving to Swan Practice and of course to the whole community.
Okay, thank you, we will. Anybody else? Councillor Mooreji?
I just had, it's an ongoing thing. They'll be here there this Saturday and the following Saturday. Basically, as long as Swan Practice wants to do that. Just one thing, I don't know anyone knows, Harold Lenson, who was the mayor in Neukirken Flun. He's, he's been mayor for 11 years. He's been replaced in an election. And he lost by, I think, I was told it by two votes. And the new mayor is Ralph Kopskis, or I can't pronounce it, who's from the SPD.
Oh, SPD.
So if, I don't suppose you are, but if anybody's right, and you've got to bear in mind, it's a new mayor in Neukirken Flun.
Right, okay. And when, so that's already been taking place?
Oh yes, they had the election and the new mayor was elected.
Is elected, okay, thank you for that.
Oh, right.
Anyone else? No, sorry councillor Stutchbury?
Could the town clerk circulate the cabinet office proposals to have an election? Because I'm quite sure that everyone wants an election. What I'm not quite sure is if. I'm quite sure that everyone wants an election, what I'm not quite sure is is what the conditions will be different to what it was last year. Obviously, the cabinet office has got a crystal ball and knows by May that everyone's going to be perfectly all right, and Covid won't be like it was last year. But I do think that, is that a statement of fact that it's just going to happen, regardless of anything? Or is it the current statement, because there's been so many statements around Covid, nationally, locally and whatever, that they change on a weekly basis? So is that a one-off forever statement?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, certainly.
The information I gave you was, I received in a verbal briefing that was given to clerks by officers of Buckinghamshire Council, so I don't have that in writing. So the best way to take that up, Robin, would probably be with democratic services at Buckinghamshire Council.
They won't have it in writing either. In other words, it's gossip.
No, no, it was a factual statement that was made.
I'm joking, Paul.
Well, I did see that somewhere written down on some site, but I suppose really they've got to play it by ear and see how things are around that time.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
That's what I was alluding to, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
We don't know where we are, do we?
No, we haven't got a crystal ball. Okay.
I have Christmas.
Yeah.
Oh dear. Okay, so thank you everybody for a delightful meeting tonight.
Thanks, Matt.
Take care everybody, stay safe.
Thanks Paul, thanks Nina.